Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our specially called Transition City Council Meeting. Day is November 11th, 2023. Thank you for taking the time to be with us today. It's appreciated. Hopefully, this meeting is not excruciatingly long. We will do our best to get through this in a timely manner. To begin this meeting, I would like to go ahead and officially call to order the meeting. The time is 6:37. Madam Clerk, would you please move forward with the roll call?
Yes. Mayor Owens?
Present.
Councilmember for District 1, Ron Davis.
Present.
Councilmember for District 2, Dami Oladapo.
Present.
Councilmember for District 3, Keisha Jeffcoat.
Present.
Councilmember for District 4, Patricia Alk.
Not present, but accounted for.
And Councilmember District 5, T.J. Ferguson.
Present.
And Councilmember for District 6, Deborah Herndon.
Present.
Thank you. The quorum's present.
Thank you. Before we go any further, I would like to acknowledge that Councilwoman is not here with us today. She has an unfortunate medical issue that she is dealing with. We have been all been in contact with her, and in some way, we obviously hope that she gets better very soon. She's quickly on the road to recovery, and if she has a personal statement at some point in time, we'll make sure we get that out to all of you. So, thank you. At this point in time, we'd like to move to our invocation. Dr. Boyd is still in the room, which he is. Would you please come forward, sir, and give us the invocation?
Good afternoon. It's power heads for a word of prayer. We are grateful for this day, this day that we have never seen before, a day we shall never see again. We're grateful for this season, this holiday season, one in which we get to acknowledge the love that fills so many of our hearts, and the desire for love that we have for so many in our world. And so, I pray today that as we go into this Christmas season, that we will think about those who are less fortunate, but also express gratitude to those who are closest to us, who helped make a difference in our lives. I pray that grace would be upon each of us as we go about the various activities of our day and the various activities of our life, and again, that we will find ourselves in a place of gratitude for all the blessings that we have. We're grateful for these things now, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Jeffcoat, would you mind if you could...
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fix item 5, the approval of agenda. Our agenda is being distributed to myself and all the council during the discussions or items. Do you have any other discussion I'd like to entertain? Would you like to put the agenda as written?
I move to approve the agenda as written.
I second.
So, motion then. I second it. So, call for all those in favor of approving the agenda as written to say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, to nay. There is no opposition. Ayes, have it. Approve the agenda. I would add, Madam Clerk, I'd like to move to item 6, which is public comment. Do you have some public comment cards now?
Yes, I have several here. Just a reminder that the time limit is two minutes, and it's not a question-and-answer session because the mayor and council have business to take care of today, but they will take into account your comments. First of all, the first one that came in to me was Ray Thomas, and then after Ray is Leroy Trey Hutchins.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
My name is Ray Thomas, and I'm president of the Maybleton Improvement Coalition. And tonight, I'd just like to say a few words to the council. First, on behalf of Mick, we're also known as Mick, on behalf of Mick and myself, I'd just like to express my gratitude and appreciation for the remarkable and historic year for the city of Maybleton and the work you council members have done so far. By the way, I'm sorry to hear Councilwoman Hawk is not here, and I hope she's doing better and feeling well. First, I want to congratulate you, Mr. Mayor, for being recognized and being a recipient of the Harvard certification among 27 mayors in the entire country. That is awesome. And so, this is a major accomplishment, not only for you personally, but also for the city as well. I think that shines a good light on the city. Second, I would like to thank each and every one of you and the staff. You've been working so hard to accomplish so many things so far. It is simply amazing to me that what you guys have accomplished and achieved so far, from passing a spending plan, passing city ordinances, which by the way, I want to thank you all for giving us an opportunity to be a part of that process. And I understand that you're going to be launching your website and communication system pretty soon. So, congratulations in only six months to be able to carry that heavy lift. That is amazing. There are still many challenges ahead. However, this council has conducted itself, and even though I've had conflicts on Thursdays, I've been watching, and I'm just amazed that this council has conducted itself with such civility. And I know, you know, in this day and time, you know, politics is a rough-and-tumble game, but so far, you all have conducted yourselves very, very well, and I'm proud to be a Maybleton resident and community activist. And so, just thank you all for continuing to conduct yourselves in a professional manner, even when you don't agree. Okay. Finally, as we move into 2024, I wish, I can't even see my own handwriting here. I wish all of you, you know, continued success, and I ask for your support as we begin to plan for the Taste of Maybleton for 2024. Taste of Maybleton has grown to over 6,000 people attending that, and we're looking for your support as we continue to bring the community together for that successful event, as well as other community events that we have participated in and we conduct for the city of Maybleton. You know, we've been doing this for quite a while, and we're on the ground floor. We have accomplished, I think, quite a bit, and I think the city has accomplished and is accomplishing, and our community is accomplishing, quite a bit. So, thank you for this time. I wish you all a Merry Christmas and a happy holiday. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Some quick updates, since I haven't seen you guys in quite some time. So, literacy leader, the state school superintendent came to Cobb County to issue literacy leader school awards, and we actually happen to have one of those leader schools here in the southern portion of the county for their 15% growth in their literacy numbers. So, their scores overall from testing jumped 15% from last year. And so, the Riverside Elementary School is the literacy leader, so we're excited about that. They're one of only two. The other school was Ostel Elementary, which is right next door, and we had eight schools that received their awards for proficiency over 90%. So, a total of 10, but we're excited to have both of them in post three, but one right here in the city of Maybleton. The Braves celebrated their season of giving with a day of service at Lindley Middle School just recently, and also at Betty Gray Middle School. Both of those schools are the Hank Aaron All-Star schools this year, and so, their commitment to supporting our schools has been tremendous. At Lindley, they did some landscaping, some new picnic tables, and beautified the school, so we're excited about that. And they also did some improvements at Betty Gray Middle School as well. Betty Gray Middle School is off to a great start with that $10 million investment from the school district and your SPOSS dollars, of course. They've implemented a pathway to STEM certification. They've created a STEM robotics lab. They have a health pathway and also a television studio being created inside that new middle school. So, we're excited about what's happening at Betty Gray Middle School. I'm also wanted to share this opportunity with those of you that have constituents in South Cobb High School, Pebblebrook High School, Osborne High School. Those three schools have been acknowledged by the Morehouse College Cobb County Upward Bound Program. And so, if you know of any first-generation low-income students that may need support, making sure that they get to college, that's an excellent program to get them in. So, they can reach out to me. It's on social media or reach out to Morehouse directly. We're going to get them in that program. Also, Communities and Schools has been a great partner with our schools. They have inked a deal with Destiny World Church, thank you, in partnership leveraging a $10,000 grant commitment to improve literacy at Riverside and City View. So, Riverside is a literacy leader school. They're also going to get a commitment to have some tutoring that Destiny World Church has partnered with Communities and Schools. It's a $10,000 investment from that church, and so, we appreciate Pastor Purvis over at Destiny World Church. Lastly, the winter break is upon us, so next Monday and Tuesday are half-days for parents, and so, your students will be coming home early, and they will be out until Thursday, January the 4th. So, that's a big break. Yeah. So, have fun, and happy holidays to each of you. Thank you.
Monica Delantsey, and then we have Denny Wilson, and Denny is the last one.
Good evening. Monica Delantsey, District 2. First, I would like to just remind the city of Maybleton that there are a number of apartment communities renters in the city of Maybleton. District 2 has the most, followed by District 6. Also, we suggested that the council meet with residents, basically to meet with residents, to hear the good and also suggestions of rooms of improvement. If you have not had a chance, we'd like for you to review the Atlanta Journal-Constitution article, which did a report that won a prize this year for doing a report about the number of dangerous dwellings in the metro Atlanta area. Maybleton had 11 of those apartments listed on that list. This is for the metro area. So, what we'd like to ask for the city of Maybleton to do is you need to look at reviewing about establishing your own ordinances, especially you need to address the eviction court that's happening in Cobb County. Cobb County is wall-to-wall evicting black families, especially women with children. It's across the board, north, south, east, west. But as far as the city of Maybleton, the city of Maybleton as a city will have the most evicted families or people, especially when evictions started back up in January. We're asking that you ask can it be halted? So, you're going to find out why is it that when people go to court, they're not given an attorney. Only people that get an attorney is the landlords, and then when people are talking, they're thinking that the landlord is representing them. They don't understand that. So, you need to review that process and ask why is it that in the city of Maybleton that tenants are not getting attorneys when they go to court? Also, you need to review the fact that a number of apartment communities are delaying. They're refusing to do maintenance, refusing to do maintenance, but yet they're continuously asking for rent, continuously to ask for different other things to be done, but they would not fix broken windows, and it's winter time. Also, we would like for you to do a renters' rights summit or renters' summit, whatever you want to do. We can partner with you, but we need for you to make that be the priority and not just wait and see. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Delantsey.
And Denny Wilson.
Good evening. My name is Denny Wilson, and I am a resident of District 2 under the leadership of the wonderful, intelligent, and brilliant Dami Oladapo. I want to thanks the council for standing up for our community a few weeks ago. Councilmember Ferguson, Councilmember Jeffcoat, and Councilmember Davis showed up to a Board of Commissioners meeting, and they stood with the community. Thank you guys for that. I really appreciate that. But moving back to that, as you know, the Tunnel to Tower establishment was approved, and they're using the name Atlanta Veterans Village. And I just want to remind you guys that if they're going to come into our community, then they should come in with a name that reflects our community, and Atlanta Veteran Village does not reflect our community. And secondly, you guys are sitting on prime property here in this area. Today was the first time that I had been inside the gates of Word of Faith Church. I had never been in there, but I went in today to help a young man deliver some Christmas equipment that he had let Family Life Restoration Center use. So, I followed them over to help him unload. We're sitting underneath this building, the beautiful epicenter, and across the street, we have the beautiful Word of Faith Church. But then you go on the other side of I-20, and what do you have? And as I told the Board of Commissioners months ago, the problem in this community lies between I-20 and factory shows. Because when you get on the other side of factory shows, you have the nice communities with the nice homes from 350 and up. So, I think if you guys pay attention to what you've been doing, you've been given a diamond in the rough. I mean, you've been given a community that you can build out to be one of the most beautiful communities in Cobb County, and you can set the stage for what Cobb County will become. But you're going to have to take over zoning to build out your own city, because right now, your city is being built out for you. And I know my two minutes is up, but I got one other thing to say, and then I'm done. We're going to have a light show, Family Life Restoration Center at 6328, I think is the address. On the 20th, we're going to have a light show for the children here in South Cobb, and I'd like for you guys to get the word out, put it on your website, to spread the word, that we want the families to bring their children out. We want them to take pictures with Santa, drink hot cocoa, and we're going to be showing Christmas movies for the children, and that's the 20th of December. And I think they'll be out of school then, and I want you guys to show up. I want to see each and every one of you at least walk through there, even if you don't stay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Madam Clerk, do we have any other comment cards?
I do not have any more cards.
Okay. Thank you. Well, we will conclude public comment for tonight and move on to item 7, which is the first component of our new business, the authorization for the mayor to execute a memorandum of agreement with the Department of Homeland Security, U.S. Citizenship and Immigration Service for citizenship and immigration status verification. Man, that's a mouthful. DHS uses for immigration status, and this is obviously tied to requirements that we have upon verification of immigrant status for new employees as we start to grow as a... I start with... I got to stop talking?
Sorry about that.
So, with that being said, yeah, so this is obviously as we move on to last week, or I'm sorry, the last meeting, we were able to approve our paid schedules and to start discussing about adding staff, and so, this becomes an important component of that. It is a statute by law that we actually have to do this. And I know there's been some work that's been laid, at least looking at some things online, ensuring that we have the right certifications, the right things go for. So, I don't know if there's, needs to be a lot of discussion on this, but Madam Clerk, Madam Attorney, let both of you kind of handle this, being that I know... let both of you kind of handle this, being that I know, Clerk, you've had to do this with other cities as well.
Yes. This has been going on for quite some time. Mainly in 2011, the state mandated that all agencies are supposed to contract with the SAVE organization. And if we provide benefits, we have to make sure that those people, those vendors or companies that have over 10 employees do use the eVerify system. As a city, we'll be using the eVerify system for anybody that we hire. Within three days, we have to check and verify that they are a citizen. So also, when we provide benefits, which is mainly business license, even providing benefits to our employees, we have to show that we follow the eVerify system and that we are making sure that we're not hiring illegal immigrants. So this is a contract with the actual organization, the Department of Homeland Security. And they will, if we need to, we can run and make sure that somebody is a U.S. citizen when we hire them or when they issue a license. So whenever somebody does get a license, business license, they will sign an affidavit saying that they do not hire any illegal immigrants. So this is... Oh, and the city has to make reports every year. By December 31st, we do have to report to the Department of Audits and Accounts by December 31st and show everyone that we have provided a benefit to, that they have signed the affidavit and has an eVerify number. In other words, we have to do it.
And I know we have taken some proactive steps. I know we went through with the enrollment process. And there were some webinars that I think have already been scheduled. And Lily Smith, my executive assistant, has gotten the e-verification certification as well, and you did as well. So we have, we do have two people that's already taken initiative and gotten certified in this. So I don't know if there's, again, any other questions, comments? The council has any discussion or questions about this? Madam Attorney, anything you wanted to add to this?
I just shared the city... Share your in the city for seven minutes. We'll be using the process for the occupation tax administration for residents who are less than 11 employees. And that starts...
Soon.
Yeah. So regulation is officially adopted.
All right. I don't think there's any other discussion, so I would like to entertain a motion that we authorize the mayor to execute this MOU.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we authorize the mayor to execute a memorandum of agreement with the Department of Homeland Security, U.S. Citizenship and Immigration Service for Citizenship and Immigration Status Verification.
A second.
Thank you. Motion has been moved and seconded. I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor of authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing no opposition, the authorization has been approved. Thank you for that. That moves us to Item 7B, which is a resolution for authorizing the city's membership in the Georgia Municipal Association's Workers' Compensation Self-Insurance Fund. This is another one where I think it's pretty self-explanatory. We have to have workers' comp as an entity when moving forward. So GMA, an organization that you all are very familiar with at this point in time, has stepped forward, and our clerk has been very instrumental as well as part of getting it set up. There was a lot of discussion at our retreat, I think, that we had, where we had GMA members come in and be very specific about this self-insurance fund and how it would work. So again, I don't know if there's any questions or a lot of discussions about this. Obviously, it's something that we have to have as we move forward. So is Madam Attorney or Clerk anything to add to this for the workers' comp or GMA?
No, you pretty much explained it. We are dealing with estimates right now because we don't know the actual employees and how many we're going to have. But GMA's really, has really been willing to work with us on that.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'd like to move forward and entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
I actually have one quick question. We were unable to get additional quotes correct for, or have we just decided that we're using?
For this, it was just for workers' comp?
It was just, okay.
Correct.
Do we know, basically, price-wise, how it compares with any other company, just generally?
So if you look, it's the fourth to last paid.
Yeah, it's, well, it's not numbered, but...
It's anticipated the annual premium will be four thousand. Now, that could go up a little bit. We don't expect it to go up substantially, but just based on your payroll, the initial estimates are four thousand. That's based on a $700,000 approximate estimated payroll.
Yeah, 20 employees.
Now, we're anticipating, just with the number of employees that you hire, it would be somewhere within that range because you don't plan to hire all the employees immediately. Your current spending plan is through June. But if it goes up substantially, we will certainly notify the council, and the mayor would have the authority to not execute if there's a substantial increase in that number.
Oh, right, yeah. I saw this figure. I was just curious, as a baseline, is this, where is it? Is there a baseline in terms of where it kind of falls and what is typical for this amount?
It's based on the top, the top of the position.
I think the...
I know they have a scale that they use to determine this. So this scale is going to be based on your payroll. So if your city is, if it's a larger city, then you'll just have a larger premium. So I would anticipate relative to other cities, yours probably would be on a scale maybe Brookhaven or Peachtree Corners, even though they have substantially more employees. Maybe they have less employees than a lot of cities, but it's just based on the scale based on the...
Ask your question differently.
Yeah, I don't, I'm probably not answering. I'm trying to find out... Okay, so I'm looking at a number, and, you know, I saw the number earlier, but I'm just curious where it falls in the range of what is typical for premiums for this kind of coverage.
From other vendors.
From other vendors.
Yes. So your question would be around the rate itself.
Right, yes.
And so I don't, I don't know if either of you have anything?
I don't have that comparative data. I know Malazi asked if he could maybe help and provide.
So workers' compensation is based on the nature of employees that you have. The risk here, the employees subjected to what they are doing, the higher the workers' comp is. Public safety, police, fire, public works, and all those ones we don't have. But you see, as we incorporate them, office related, they are not, administratively, they are not. But how likely that these people are setting their jobs, the police officer, the public works, machinery, working with machinery, or you have airport. So it depends on that. But now it would be just basic for us, literally basic. But as we incorporate some positions, there'll be that change.
So the question is less about this rate and as it applies to what GMA is giving versus TJ's workers' comp company. That's the question.
Okay.
So, yeah. So what we were told at the, at the retreat, when they were giving the presentation about workers' comp, was very close to what Mr. Malazi said, was that the rates themselves are pretty consistent from company to company. It is the type of employees you bring on which carries the risk which makes the rate fluctuate. So you'll notice that even with this, clerical workers have the lowest rate at .34, whereas city administrator is .57.
And they basically said it fluctuates from company to company maybe two cents.
Yeah, it's not much. It's, it's, most of the determination is based on the type. So like, if we had police and fire, obviously, the rate for those would be a lot, much more.
And also, Georgia Municipal Association probably has most of the cities in Georgia on workers' comp and liability and things like that. So we know their track record and can't go wrong by having workers' comp with GMA.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Again, I'll move forward with calling for a motion to approve this resolution to authorizing the city's membership in GMA's Workers' Comp Self-Insurance Fund.
I motion to approve the resolution authorizing the city's membership in the Georgia Municipal Association Workers' Compensation Self-Insurance Fund.
Aye, second.
Thank you. Being moved and had a second, I would like to move us forward to a vote. All those in favor of approving the resolution authorizing the city's membership, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it. We have now approved the resolution authorizing the city's membership into the GMA workers' comp. Thank you. Another milestone moment moved forward. So this takes us now to Item 8, which is a couple of discussion items. First one of those is a kind of a precursor to what we're just talking about, city benefits and insurance plans. I know there's been a lot of work that's been done over the last couple of weeks that relates to this. Again, moving us forward along the route of being able to hire employees and build a fantastic staff here at the city. One of those key things that we have to be able to do is provide not only workers' comp insurance, but we have to be able to provide benefits and insurance plans. So I'd like to go ahead and open that conversation around the benefits and insurance plans specifically to some of the items that's taken place over the past week or so. Madam Attorney or Clerk, did you have comments you wanted to bring to the floor for these items?
Okay, we adopted our spending plan, and we know that we'll be hiring employees soon. So we had to start getting quotes on health and insurance. And you have to take into account the fast speed that we're going here at the city of Mapleton to get all this going. So GMA has offered us, I think, 23 different plans that we can choose from with different premiums and deductibles. And we all have to look at that. We're studying that. Also, I, the executive assistant and I, we asked other cities in the area who they use for their health insurance. And of course, there's some that use Georgia Municipal Association, as they have quoted us. And then there's some that have other companies. So we have a lot of data to review and look at and discuss comparing the premiums. But due to this time being December, we did have a consultant to go out and try to get other quotes for coverage for our employees. I talked with him around 4 o'clock today, and he has not been able to get a response in time or interest for this sort of situation that the city is in, being a new hire and all the unknowns that we have. He does have one company quoting us Kaiser, but they do not have a quote ready yet. And also, to get a good quote, you would need at least 50 employees. So we're kind of right at having the only quote for Georgia Municipal Association right now, and we're in the process of trying to start hiring. So this is probably a personnel discussion for a final decision. But the council, I have sent them the, all the documents that the other cities have sent us. Peachtree Corners is one, and they do have Georgia Municipal Association. And the city clerk there told me that, yes, they did the same thing. They tried to get quotes, and they could not get any. And they have been with GMA ever since they started. And I think they're probably about 13 to 14 years old now, and they're still with GMA. And then some others have Kaiser, and there's, you know, a few other companies that some of them have out there. So it's up to the council to debate and look at this situation that we're in. And I think that would need a, that would need an executive accession on that one.
Thank you for that, Madam Clerk. I think, first of all, thank you for the tremendous amount of work that you and Ms. Smith have done gathering and bringing this information together. But I also think this is one of the things where it's a dose of reality about where we are at this point in time and this stage of being a new city. If anyone has ever started a new company before, and you have a handful of employees, and you're going out into open market and trying to get insurance, I'm sure you have some appreciation for this. You know, it's not very attractive when you have just a handful number of employees and trying to go out and compete in open market for insurance plans. I am, you know, aware and thankful for GMA for being able to provide the quotes that they have, and again, providing the lists and all the other companies, or sorry, cities, that they currently are providing this service for. They did a great job, again, at the retreat, I think, of laying this out for us. We did, however, say that we wanted to take a look in the open market. I think we have. And again, it's just that dose of reality about where we are as a city. We don't necessarily have insurance companies beating our doors down to provide insurance for just such a low number of employees. I do want to note that per IRS rules, myself and the council are W-2 employees of the city. However, because most, if not all of us, have a primary employment outside of this, where we have, and we have benefits, that we are considered non-eligible participants in the system. So the fact that we can try to drive some numbers up through us, the reality is we only have just a couple of employees that would actually be able to take advantage of this now, which, again, further limits our ability to be able to take advantage of many of the plans out there. So again, I don't know. There's a lot of other discussions around this. This is really a situation where it is we are where we are. But please, if anyone has any comments for this discussion, please speak up.
I just wanted to know, is there any timeframe that we were given for other quotes? We can talk about this later, but that the consultant gave?
Well, yes, definitely. Probably we would need more time. But we also have started employees, and they need insurance. So it's kind of a difficult situation.
Right. So that's, my question is, did he say when he expected to hear back?
Oh, for Kaiser, tomorrow.
Okay.
How many different insurance companies is he taking a look at? So we can have a, you know, good comparative analysis and provide the best rate to, you know, to the employees.
I didn't get a number of how many he called, but he did, he's a, he's been around many, many years and has worked in the industry for a long time, and I'm sure he did the best he could do.
In my awareness, Kaiser was the only one that he has a handle on that knows when he's going to be getting a response from. I don't know that he got a response with any timeline for the other ones, or if they just didn't respond. I don't have a comprehensive list, but as the clerk said, I mean, he's, he consults with numerous municipalities in the Atlanta metro area. So he's well versed with many of them.
Given the challenges that we have with the small number of employees that we have, if we elect to go with GMA at this point, what would be the time period that we would have? Will we renew every year? So we'd be locked in for a year, basically?
It would be one year. I don't think that's fairly standard as well. By February.
Well, we could wait, you know, longer, but if we want February 1st for the insurance to start, we need to get them information by the 13th. They say that it takes a good 60 days to get everything set up. So if we wait after the 13th, then you're looking at insurance starting March 1st. And you'll have employees who will probably want insurance as soon as possible. And they even may have to go a month without insurance if we hire this month. Yeah?
The alternative would be the city covering Cobra.
Yes. You could pay Cobra for the employees. But I think the employees, they have to... But I think the, the employees, they have to take Cobra within a certain amount of time too. And I don't know
Understood.
if they have capability of having Cobra.
Any other discussion on this matter? Any other questions, comments for, for now? Sure, it'll be other, other items that come up, but if there's anything now, we can entertain it. All right. Hearing no other discussion on this item, I'd like to move us on to item eight B, which is a regular meeting schedule. This was brought up last, last meeting. Again, moving us along to, I dare say, out of a transitional phase into, into regular city council meetings that I'm sure that, that many people in our city will, will appreciate and, and do want to see happen. I'll, I'll kind of issue the, the same guidance I did before around this is that having a regular meeting schedule means that, that while there's obvious benefits that comes along with that, we have to ensure that we have a consistent place where we can have those meetings at. And that has been discussed and I think will continue to be discussed. And in full disclosure, we have not had that discussion with Dr. Boyd and the epicenter about that. That is, that will be something that we have to have. Again, explain to people that until we can, we can lock down potentially for six months, a year or more. I think technically, we could only go six months because that's what our spending plan is. But, but we have to have a situation where if, if we're saying second and fourth Thursday, for example, that that is contractually agreed to so that we're not, we're not working around the, the schedule of the epicenter when obviously they have paid, you know, events and things to go by. So, that's a conversation I think that we have to have in order to move this conversation by. Now, whether it's the first and third, you know, Tuesday or, or second and fourth Thursday, I don't know how we want to kind of address how we would like to do that, if that's a, if that's a doodle to work through everyone's calendar and see when, when most people are available. I think Thursdays for the most part has, has, has worked. Although we know that there are certain people, you know, in the community that have challenges on certain days. You know, I, I have personally have missed every one of my son's basketball practices or had challenges getting him back and forth because Thursdays is when they practice. So, we, we all have issues. And I think it's going to be just prudent of us probably just locking in on that. Obviously, in concert with when the venue would be available most days as well. And then coming together and hopefully being able to lock that down and go into the new year, having some idea of being able to, again, put on a website, pushing it out and people will, will have a clear idea of when those meetings will be. So, that's, I mean, I don't have anything more to add than that. It's still work in progress, but I think we have to nail down a couple of things.
Dr. Boyd, your facility is awesome.
I think, I, you know, from, from a cadence perspective, it says regular meetings, regular meeting schedule. From a cadence perspective, I think, you know, again, every other week is, I won't say every other week, the first and third or, or second and fourth. However, that, that works out. And I think along with this too, we, we would be prudent to go ahead and, and talk about next year's holiday schedule and ensure that we, we're blocking days or moving things around that schedule as well. Anyone else? Something to add along that? No? Okay. Madam Clerk or Attorney, any sage advice as we continue to think about these regularly scheduled meetings?
Mayor, I was just telling the clerk that I, I think the second probably would be better than the first and third just because it gives administration and staff more time to shore up on a monthly basis, just before your, your council meetings.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any other discussion?
I would also want to add that maybe we could entertain possibly having alternate days since Thursdays. You know, some, some people have challenges with that. Maybe, you know, one week do Thursday, one week do Wednesday, something like that. So, maybe we could have a discussion around that.
We weren't happy to entertain that. The, the, I, I think the downside of that is we lose people's ability to say we know it's going to be on Thursday. You know, and if we start to move to Tuesday and a Thursday here, it, it's, you know, there's a consistency that comes along with that that I think people will, will appreciate. Of course, again, if, if, a, as we look through the whole 2024, if, you know, holiday falls on a Thursday, then we, we need to look at adjusting something. But I, I really want people to get a sound idea of not even having to check the calendar knowing that. I mean, still, I still want people to check the calendar, but just having a very good idea of what that's going to be. But thank you for that.
And this doesn't negate the fact that we might need special called meetings in between those occasions.
It does not, absolutely. All right. Any more discussion on this matter?
Yes, as long as TJ doesn't recommend another Monday.
Wow. Yeah, and we'll have to just check the board of commissioners' schedules so we can make sure that we stay in line with them, who also are probably not on a Monday. Good point.
I, I do have a question. So, our schedule for the year, we're pretty much planning if we can have it here at the epicenter, correct?
Yes.
So, after the first year, will we be entertaining, of course, moving the meetings to another location that will be a little bit more central to other constituents? Because, you know, you all have already heard it. Everyone's like, you know, can you move the meetings to a place that's a little bit more central? So, is that something we're going to be considering maybe after this year? Because I understand the epicenter, if we can make it work, is probably the, the easiest, you know, location for now. So.
Absolutely. I would say yes. We definitely can reevaluate that. Anyone else? All right. Well, hearing no other discussion, we'll go ahead and close that and move on in the agenda to item nine, which is our city attorney comments.
No comments, Mayor.
Thank you, madam. Item ten is our city clerk comments.
No comments.
Thank you. Eleven, city council comments. Councilwoman Davis.
Just, just briefly. Good evening, everyone. Just a thousand prayers goes out to Councilwoman Aladoppo and her family. That was a tough shout. Good to hear that. She's getting a bit better. Just want to say, thank you again for being here. Again, it's always good to see the concern of citizens of the community that take time to come here and be a part of this meeting, to indulge in it. So, that's always good to see. Also want to say, happy holidays to everyone as well because this is the Christmas season coming up. And we are at a place now where giving and all that good stuff, family, all that good stuff, that's all about community. I just want everyone to know that we will continuously work hard for the city to get it where it should be as a city. My thanks to all the council and of course, the mayor, all the staff as well for their hard work. And looking forward to 2024 because I anticipate, as I'm sure some of you do too, that we're going to have a good year for the new city of Mableton. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Oladopo.
Thank you, Mayor. We're having a bit of technical difficulties with our mic, so I'll try. Is it working? I don't think so. All right. Well, I just want to say that I'm incredibly proud and grateful to be a part of this amazing community. And I'm also equally proud of the remarkable milestones that we've achieved in the short time that we've been here. It just goes to show that when we work together, good things happen. And as we venture into the holidays, I just want to send my heartfelt well wishes to all of you. And I pray that the rest of the year and next year bring forth good things, joy, peace, prosperity to all of you and your family. And thank you so much for being here tonight and I just wish you, wish you a happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Jeffcoat.
Good evening, everyone. I'm having technical difficulties too, but I can, I can sound off like we say in the military. So, first I want to say thank you all so much for being here. We really appreciate your commitment to our community and for showing up for us and our community this year. Boy, has it been a journey. You know, since we were initially indoctrinated, I guess I would say, into this, into this position. You know, we've had our share of challenges, but yet opportunities that we've welcomed. And so, I just want to thank you all so much again for being here. Thank you to the council members. I don't want to sound redundant, but I do share, share some of the same sentiments that Councilwoman Davis, as well as Councilwoman Oladopo share. And I do want to recognize a citizen that's in my district, Trey Hutchinson. Can you please stand? So, Trey was awarded the NC Bond Unsung Hero Award at Morehouse School of Medicine. Yes. So, I want to thank him for his commitment to making an impact on our communities through his service and, and through his public service. So, we really appreciate what you do and, and every, and showing up for us, right? Giving us the updates and what, with the, the school board and all that. So, we really appreciate you. So, thank you so much. Right, right, right. And then I also want to say that our prayers and thoughts are with Patty. She is a part of our council. She is our colleague and we care. And so, we wish that, that she recovers quickly and that, again, she'll be in our thoughts and prayers. And then also, you know, it is the holiday season and there are a lot of people who are in need. And so, if you, if you know of anyone who is in need, whether it's food insecurities or children that need toys, please feel free to reach out to me. I can't help everyone, but I would do my best to point you to the right resources. And I can be reached at keisha.Jeffcoat@mableton.gov. Happy holidays, everybody.
Wow. December eleventh, never thought that we would get here and we would have accomplished all that we've accomplished as a city council. I am one hundred percent just in awe of what we've been able to do. As many of you know and have he, heard, Mayor said it earlier, we're setting up a new company that has a whole bunch of government regulations and a whole bunch of things that the government wants us to do. And it's just amazing at what we've been able to accomplish. So, I applaud the work of our city clerk. Thank you, Clerk Hyatt, for all of your work. Attorney Amelia, I appreciate you and everything that you do for us. Lily, back there. Yes, our financial consultant, Frank Malazi, thank you so much. Lily, the newest member of the team back there in the back, thank you so much. To this mayor, I would not want to have been on this journey with anybody else. I truly appreciate you and all the, all the work that you've put into this. And then to the city council. Yes, and to the city council for the constant back and forth that we do to understand what's going on. And I would not want to be on this journey with anybody else. This is not easy at all. But again, I am so happy to have these people in my corner to help me navigate through this task. I'm also, she took my flair for my man Trey, so I won't say that again. But I'm also just very happy to be able to work with folks like the Mableton Improvement Coalition. I appreciate everything that you do for the city of Mableton, have done for the city of Mableton and will continue to do for the city of Mableton. Together, we can achieve more and we will achieve more. So, I truly appreciate everything that you all have done. ACT, who is not here in the room, same thing. Truly appreciate everything that you all have done and will continue to do in, y'all here, in 2024. So, with that, I just want to say again, thank you. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, you know, Happy Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, all the ones that might be celebrated during this time. And let's get ready to make 2024 the best that this area, this new city of Mableton has ever seen. That's all.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Herndon.
Thank you. I'll be short and sweet. I, I think we, we hit another milestone today as a council. I think this is the fastest we've ever gotten through an agenda. So, let's mark this day down in history. Because you may not see it again. I want to say happy holidays to everyone and just safety and blessings to, to all. So glad that you are here. Please keep our council member in prayer and thank you for being here.
Mayor, real quick. Councilwoman, turn this camera around to everybody else that's in the room with you right now. If you need anything, you've got this council that has got your back. And we will come down there to say and tear some people up if we need to. All right? Get better, get back.
Indeed.
And Mayor, I'm sorry, I have an announcement too.
Please, go ahead.
I was, actually, ACT, speaking of ACT, Councilman Ferguson. ACT is having their Toys for Tots event on December sixteenth at the South Carve Recreation Center from two until, I mean, ten until two. So, they are taking donations. This is going to be a drive up, but we've been doing this for quite a, quite a while now. So, our support is definitely needed and encouraged, but it is to help kids that aren't as fortunate as many of the kids here. So, remember at the South Carve Recreation Center, December sixteenth, two to ten, Toys for Tots. Ten to two. Okay, ten to two. I'm being auditorily dyslexic. But anyway, ten to two at the South Carve Rec Center. But we encourage you to be there, be a part of that because that is very important to these kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And I, I think that's the tenth or eleventh year. I remember having a photo of ten years ago, eleven years ago at, at that same event. And so, when we talk about these events and things that go on, I, I'm often reminded that while we're a new city, we're a well-established community. You know, a lot of these events, a lot of these organizations have been around for quite some time doing the work that, that was necessary, that had to be done. Someone had to speak up, someone had to organize, someone had to be there in the gap. The fact that, that the city is here now does somewhat usher a new day and age and time. But we do so, number one, standing on the backs of those organizations. And I'm looking at many of those members tonight that for years that I know personally that I've worked with and even organizations that I have not. So, so I think it's imperative that as we look and talk about how much forward momentum we're going to have, we understand that, that that work is, is nothing more than built on the work that many organizations have already done. Also, it kind of makes me think about, make note of last, last week, I had the fantastic opportunity to, to attend a program at Harvard Kennedy School of Government, the Bloomberg Center for Cities, the U.S. Conference of Mayors, Institute of Politics at Harvard Kennedy School of Government. As, as Ray mentioned, as one of twenty-seven mayors across the country that recently got elected into their esteemed growth and development program. And you know, as I, as I told someone this morning, we, as we sit here at, at the epicenter in Mableton, Georgia, and we conduct the business of what we're doing to stand up a new city, we have to realize the eyes of the nation, not just a state, not just a county. The eyes of the nation are on us. And you can fact-check me on this, but I'm quite certain we are the newest city, not just in the state, we're the newest city in the country. The newest city in the country. So, eyes are on us, what we are doing, the business that we're conducting. The, the situation that we're in as we build this city literally from scratch. I'm honored and humbled to, to be able to attend the program and make all the great connections and have an infinite amount of wisdom from people that have done these kind of things and the study this in academia to bring this into real life. But the true benefit of this is that as a city, as a city, we are proverbially on the map. People, people see us. And now, the benefit of going through this program as well, which will extend through April of 2024, is that we have some of the best and brightest minds in this country now that are willing and are vested in helping us become even a greater place. So, you know, there, there are people that will continue to doubt our capabilities, that will even continue to question if we should exist as a city. But the fact of the matter is that we're here. to question if we should exist as a city. But the fact of the matter is that we're here. We'll continue to move forward. We'll continue to be diligent in what we do. We'll be responsible as stewards of funds, of data, of everything that we have to do going forward. I look forward to continuing to do this with this council. It's been a challenge this year, but boy, it's been a challenge well worth taking. I will end with asking you the same thing I ask always. As we continue to move forward, we want to have your help as citizens, as engaged people. As we move into 2024 and we start our boards, commissions, and authorities, reach out to your council. I think most of you have seen the forum that's out there. If you have not, we'll post it again. But reach out to your council members and ask them how you can be engaged, how you can get involved. If you're watching out there across the internet, the same applies. We need dedicated, smart, talented, compassionate, passionate people that want to help see the city move forward. There are six of us, and myself, seven, on this council. We have very few staff members. We not only want your help, we need your help. So I make that plea to have you help us make the city what we know it can be, what we all want to see it be. And with that, I will thank you all for attending today. Thank you to my fantastic council for the work that you do. Thank you, staff, for always being available and engaged. And I will close out, comment with that, and entertain a motion to move us into executive session. Thank you all.
I motion to move us into executive session for personnel, real estate.
Litigation.
Litigation and exemptions.
I second.
Thank you. Having an opinion second, I'd like to move to a vote. All those in favor of moving us into executive session for litigation, real estate, personnel, and exemptions, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I second. If you're not staying with us to your executive session, you can come back. Thank you for coming. Please have a safe travel. Wonderful. Thank you.
Happy holidays.
All right. So, like entertain a motion to take us out of executive session?
I move to take us out of executive session.
Second.
All in favor of ending executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it, we've now closed our executive session. Being the executive session is over, I'm willing to entertain any motions that may be brought forth.
Our agenda motion for the mayor to approve federal insurance and tolls within five years, but in terms of the useful association after now, not to exceed the anticipated monthly cost in the spending.
Thank you.
Aye, Senator.
Thank you, having a motion being seconded, I'd like to call to vote, all those in favor of allowing the mayor to move forward with benefits package from GMA not to exceed the amount in the spending plan, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing no opposition to ayes have it, thank you, we'll move forward with the GMA benefits. So with that being said, thank you all for a great night, a very productive night, and the work that we were able to get done. At this point in time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.